Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Pine Top Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum, Councilor Heizer is delayed, he'll be here shortly. Please remember to silence your cellphone for us before we get started if you would please. I would ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance: To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our two Timber Mesa First Responders who we lost earlier this week. Thank you, I would like to invite Pastor Jim Stansberry to come up and give our invocation tonight, please.
Let's pray. Father, these are trying times. This has been a tough week, it's been a tough couple of weeks. We pray for the families of Damon Thompson and Brenna Kulikowski. We pray that in their grief you give them comfort, that in their weakness you give them strength. Father, we thank you that we have these type of people that serve our communities, that are willing to sacrifice. Father, I pray for this meeting, that during this meeting you are honored, and we thank you for this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Jim. Item B on the agenda tonight is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the Town Council. The Town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. Council may direct staff to study the matter for further consideration of a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard during Call to the Public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. At this point, I don't have any requests to speak in Call to the Public, but I would like to read a community statement regarding our parade. We know many of you are looking forward to this year's parade, and we understand the disappointment that came with yesterday's announcement. This decision to cancel was not made lightly. Our community is hurting. Two young firefighters from Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District lost their lives in the line of duty last week. Their families, friends, and fellow First Responders are grieving an unimaginable loss. At this moment, the most important thing we can do as a town is to pause and give them our full support. Some have suggested that the parade continue and be held in their honor. While we deeply appreciate the heart behind that idea, the reality is that a parade requires many First Responders to manage traffic and public safety. Moving forward with the event would mean asking our police officers, firefighters, and EMS crews to work instead of standing alongside their grieving colleagues and the families of the fallen. We believe it would be unfair to ask them to choose between duty and community during such a difficult time. Before making this decision public, we shared it with key members of the Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District. They expressed their gratitude that we chose to prioritize supporting them and their families over holding the parade. Parades and celebrations will return, but honoring these families and standing in solidarity with the fire department is something we only have one chance to do right. The greatest way we can show respect is by giving them the space, time, and unity they deserve. We ask for your understanding, and we thank you for joining us in lifting up the families, our First Responders, and one another during this very difficult time. I thank you, and we will be back next year. And I have no other requests to speak in Call to the Public unless anybody has failed to submit something. So we'll move on then to Item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered routine matters and will be acted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the Town Council requests that an item or items be removed for discussion. Council members may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in their normal sequence unless called out of sequence. We have just one item on our consent agenda tonight, are there any questions in the council? None, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Thank you, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously. Item D, public comment, will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 is a proclamation of Fire Prevention Week for October 5th through 11th. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Town of Pine Top Lakeside is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in Pine Top Lakeside and visiting, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged can overheat, start a fire, or explode, and whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries, and whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: Buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires, and whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion, and whereas the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community, and whereas Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District and Pine Top Fire District First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach, and whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Therefore, I sterling views for Stephanie Irwin, Mayor of the Town of Pine Top Lakeside, to hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Pine Top Lakeside, done at the Town Hall this second day of October, today, September 2025.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate that. Move on to Item D3, excuse me, D2, Presentation from Save Our Park President on Adopt an Acre Fundraising Plan. Eric, if you'd come up, please.
A presentation will be given by Nancy Welsh, who's our communication expert.
Okay, come on up, Nancy.
Okay, thank you. Let's make sure it's on. Let me just make sure it's working. Yep, okay, great. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for this opportunity to talk with you tonight about, I think, a really exciting project for Pine Top Lakeside and for all of our regional communities. It, as you'll see from our brief presentation, it involves many, many people around the community. It is a long-term strategy. It is created through partnership between the public and private, and it focuses on maintenance. This is a topic that has come up many times, just the expense, the difficulty of doing maintenance on the park, the 107 acres in the park currently, and then the potential of new acreage added to the park adds to that burden for both the Town and the community as a whole. So we are really presenting this Adopt an Acre concept as an opportunity to develop the funding mechanism to be able to handle those maintenance costs in partnership between Save Our Park and the Town of Pine Top Lakeside. So I'll run through this brief presentation, be happy to get your feedback, and answer any questions that you might have. So our purpose in the Adopt an Acre is twofold. It is really, first and foremost, to raise funds to help the Town of Pine Top Lakeside maintain Woodland Lake Park. This is a gem in our community, it's a jewel. Maintaining it is a challenge, and that's what this really addresses. We also are looking for an easy way for residents, visitors, businesses, organizations, and institutions, everyone in our community to play a part in raising funds for maintenance of the park. So when you think about why Adopt an Acre, this is a common program around the country for habitats, parks, all kinds of entities. It's frequently used, and it really helps to be action-oriented. It gives people something to do, to show their love of the park, and that is what will help them do this again and again. It also is the stewardship of a tangible place, a place that's important to us, and it may motivate it, motivate other people to become donors because it is action-oriented, and they are actually being a steward of the park. So you'll hear me talk about adopters and sponsors, we'll get to sponsors in a moment, but adopters are really accepting this opportunity to give, to donate, and their adoption, their activity, is really about the opportunity to help pay for town maintenance and management. That's the reason to adopt, that's the reason the program is here. Now, let's get to the fine print of adopting. Changes cannot be made to the land, and, this is truly the fine print, I won't read it to you, but there's no overnight camping, there's not a way to change their park, they are not getting their acre, it is not theirs except on a map, it is, they are providing funding to help maintain the park. So this fine print is very important. So finally, let's talk about how, before we get to the financing part, the donors that we are talking about, whether they are adopters or businesses that will want to sponsor our Adopt an Acre program, we are looking for people to do an annual gift, and we want them to feel that they are truly a part of this activity. So we will do a lot for them. Personalized certificates, park maps showing, quote, "their acre," and the total, how we are doing with that. We'll be putting their names on a list that will be publicized. We'll be looking at the kiosks around the park to be able to show how to get more people involved. And we'll regularly communicate with people so that they know how the program is going, they'll know what's happening at the park, and they will feel a part of the community. Acknowledging people is extraordinarily important, as you know, and it may be a token of our appreciation that will help them feel valued as well, whether it's a button, a bumper sticker, a t-shirt, you know, something that will help them feel valued. So acknowledging donors is really important. And how we market this will be also very important. I won't go through all of this, but you can see from this list that we are looking at a comprehensive marketing program. We are looking for towns' assistance in their marketing. We will be doing a lot of marketing with Save Our Park, and the personal outreach, the other methods will be very important to getting the word out and to getting people involved in Adopt an Acre. So let's go on to the nitty-gritty here. That is what this will, will ask of our residents and visitors and all of those groups we mentioned. The donation levels will be set at $50, $200, and $500 an acre, depending on the location and the cost to maintain an acre. We know that some areas of the parks are much more expensive than others to keep track of and to keep in good condition, and that will reflect the adopting those particular acres. We will also be developing sponsorships with businesses, organizations, institutions at various dollar levels. These will help connect the park more to business entities, organizations in the area, and I think it will end up being a very important part of Adopt an Acre. And we will be keeping all of the Adopt an Acre donations in a special restricted account at Save Our Parks so that it will be very easy to track those dollars and keep track of those dollars. So, also, we will be doing, covering program costs with donations and sponsorships. We'll be administering this program in partnership with the Town. We value this partnership dramatically, and so we want to really make this a strong partnership for this particular program, and Save Our Park will lead the marketing via an annual plan that all of the partners will have a chance to take a look at and to help create. We have a new webpage coming that will allow donations to be taken directly electronically. We will ask people for donations for multiple years for their acres, they can also do multiple acres, and we will do annual reports for the transparency of the program and annual evaluations to improve it. So that gives you a sense of Adopt an Acre. We look for funding that will help maintain the park. We are starting small with 107 acres currently in the park, and will give us the experience as we can to expand the program for additional acres that might come into the park. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have or get any feedback that you might have.
Thank you, Nancy, that was a very good presentation. Any questions for Nancy?
When do you plan to kick this off?
We anticipate kicking it off early in the coming year, in the first quarter of 2026. We have more web work to do and just more, some more planning and developing of materials and communications, so I would say the first quarter of 2026.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith?
I was just wondering, are you going to put together, are you going to figure a map for everybody so they know where their acre is and all that stuff?
Yes, and electronically, that is much easier than it sounds. So it would be, it's readily done, and I think it will help people to identify with their place and help them be able to show to their friends and family, oh, here's mine, why don't you get this one and this one and this one? We hope that it is as much a marketing tool as any knowledge.
You're going to sell acres under the lake? You're going to subtract that out?
I'm going to ask our lake managers.
Aquatic opportunities will be available.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Is there anything else I can answer for you?
Vice Mayor, did you have something?
No.
No. So, Councilor Turner.
With the support of my fellow councilors here to go forward with this, we might want to consider making this presentation to the Chamber of Commerce, maybe talk to Mike Moffinbyer and get the business community educated on this program.
Excellent idea, we will do that.
That's a great idea, Councilor Turner. We had an estimate that it's going to cost, if we secure the balance of the park, the additional 435 acres, we had a preliminary estimate, it was going to be $100,000 a year to maintain that. At this point in time, the Town is probably not going to be able to afford to do that, so we're really counting on you guys. I think it's just critical that we get this partnership moving forward, because this is something that the community really wants, I believe, but we have to be very careful that we're going to be able to be good stewards of it, too, so.
Absolutely.
It's really critical, really critical. And I assume you're going to continue with other fundraising opportunities as well, just your general solicitations of donations, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, anything else? Councilor Turner.
There's a lot of people in the room here right now, so this is something I would have brought up during our liaison reports at the end of the meeting, I don't expect to see this many people, but Save Our Park, that Save Our Park organization is having a cleanup day, they call it a work day, annual day where they're going to go in and clean up around the nature center. It's eight o'clock on Saturday, anyone who can volunteer some time, please come by.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you, Nancy, we look forward to great success. Thank you, Eric, as well.
Thank you.
Item D3 on our agenda tonight is Discussion and Possible Legal Action for Resolution Number 25-1787, Appointing Gabe Muldra as CFO to File the FYE 630/2025 Alternative Expenditure Limitation Report, AELR, with the Arizona Auditor General. Kristi?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item came to council on June 10th, 2025. I made a mistake and wrote that for fiscal year 2526, it should have been fiscal year ending 2025. I spoke with the Arizona Auditor General, we still have time to get this in, they just wanted it in by March, so we have plenty of time. They were very helpful, and so we're good for our fiscal year ending 26 to upload the annual expenditure limitation report, however, we need to appoint Gabe Muldra to upload the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, to upload that AELR. We had previously appointed Kevin, he's not here, so this is just cleaning that up so that he can get that submitted for us.
Okay, thank you, Kristi, any questions? Motion, Vice Mayor?
I move to approve Resolution Number 25-1787, Designating Finance Director Gabe Muldra as the Chief Fiscal Officer to File the Annual Expenditure Limitation Report with the Arizona Auditor General for fiscal year ending 630/25.
I second that.
Thank you, we have a motion to second, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, that carries unanimously, thank you, Kristi, appreciate that. Item D4 is Information Discussion and Possible Legal Action to Approve the August 2025 Financial Report. The James Vincent Group, I think Sarah's on the phone, or Gabe?
Sarah's on the phone.
Sarah, okay, thank you, Sarah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
That's the wrong one.
One second, we'll get the.
There it goes, okay.
Perfect. Well, good evening, I hope you guys can hear me okay. The August 2025 Monthly Financial Report is in your packet, and it begins on page 29. We'll touch base on the year-to-date numbers here, so let me just forward this screen. Looking at our year-to-date revenue for the general fund, we had $1.5 million worth of revenue collected, that's August year-to-date, with TPT collections at 1.1 million, other taxes are just over $300,000, and then our non-tax revenue is just about, just below $43,000. Looking at our TPT across all funds, similar to what we saw back in the July report out as well, the same categories are really driving that decrease. So total, we're looking at 2.9% down from this time previous year. The big drivers of that are construction is down 51.8% from August of 2024, as well as commercial rentals also down about 44%. Retail sales, just like we saw in July, is up August year-to-date from prior year about 4.3%. Sorry, it's a little delayed, there we go. Coming, there we go. I'm looking at our general fund expenditures, we are $1.6 million spent through the month of August, that's about 15.92% of the budget for the fiscal year, and we're about 17% of the way through the year. When you look at that across the board, you can see most of those categories of those departments are actually over that 17%, that's predominantly related to the fact that we actually had three payrolls in the month of August, so when you adjust for that, really we want to look at people, departments being around the 20% mark. A couple of the departments are over 20%, and it's the same, again, as we talked about in the July, really related to timing of expenditures. The magistrate is at 70.23%, and that's driven based off of the annual contract with Navajo County Clerk that was paid in July. On the Town Council is at 31.18%, and that's due to the annual subscriptions for the League of Arizona that was also paid in July. The library is over, at 24.4%, and that's just timing of those employee benefits, it's a small department, and so when you have that third payroll in the month, it really causes those employee benefits and costs to go up. And then same thing with the fleet maintenance group, they're at 23.26%, and it's also driven by that additional payroll in the month of August. Any questions on the general fund expenditures?
We don't have any, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, looking at the other expenditures by funds, again, 17% of the way through the year, and most of the funds you'll see here are below that 17%. Streets is at 22.1%. Again, we talked about this last month, most of that's due to the increased cost for telephone and radios, which is at 57% spent for the year, and then we had some drainage rehabilitation, which is actually at 218% spent through the year. And then tourism promotions, it's at 17.95% through the year. That's, again, just driven based off of the timing of our events' costs when they fall in the fiscal year, and so that's what's driving that there. And then finally, looking at our fund balance trends, so general fund cash as of August was at $1.2 million, which is down from prior year by about $3.2 million, and then we are down from July about 128, meaning that we've spent more than we brought in, and that's about 128 net from, since July. And we are projecting to have about $793,000 in that general fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions? So I have to get to the streets fund, I had a question, Sarah, just a second. Bear with me, just a second, I'm sorry.
No worries.
So I noticed we had, in Drainage Rehab, a negative in August.
Yes.
Can you explain how that happened?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, for that question. Really, that was a correction of a thing, a posting that happened in July. If we had a posting that happened in July of an expense that was coded incorrectly, meeting with Director Patterson and Malena, we identified that that was coded to the drainage rehabilitation, it needed to be up in street maintenance, and so rather than changing that in the bill itself, we just booked a reclass, so we booked that from the drainage count into the street maintenance account.
Okay, thank you, that just looked rather unusual.
It is, yes.
Yeah, okay, and then in Fund 19, I've been kind of going back through some of our prior-year financials, and I've noticed in Fund 19 that the BNY Mellon account hasn't changed at all, and I did notice, like, as of the March 31st financials, there was a little bit interest. there was a little bit interest earned somewhere, and I assumed it was in that account. So, maybe that needs to be updated?
Madam Mayor, I don't have the answer for that, but I will definitely take that and respond back to the council.
Yeah, thank you. You can just let me know. I appreciate that, Sarah. I don't think it's going to be very much, but every little bit helps.
Absolutely.
So, any other questions or comments? Councilor Turner?
Do we have a way to predict what our spending's going to look like in the next five or six months? Do we have a crystal ball or some mechanism for... Like, we're great for the first two months of this fiscal year, but...
We don't like the way it's trending, but based on the things that we've been doing internally with having conversations with every department and every employee about purchases, to be careful with those purchases, we're trying to reduce spending. Taking several other measures that should improve our spending issue. Obviously, we're all working towards the goal of, you know, making sure we don't spend more than we make. You know, at the end of the day, we've got to be...
Just like home.
Yeah, that's our hope, and that's what we've got to work towards, and that's what we must do. You know, the fund balance that she just reported at the year-end is about $800,000, which is seriously low. It should be much higher than that. And, you know, if we just kind of break even and don't spend more than we make, we're not really increasing our reserves either. So, you know, we have a real uphill trajectory, but we're going to get there. We've got several things in place that we talked about in a study session earlier today and continue to have those conversations to make sure that our spending stays within reason and doesn't get out of hand. Thank you. I wish I had a crystal ball. I don't.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't know. Maybe Sarah has something she wants to add to that.
Sarah, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I would add to that is just if you look at the last page of the financial packet, that really shows the cash flow of what we anticipate is coming in each month, and then the expenses out. That is based off of cash, not necessarily accrual-based accounting. So, expenses could be different, and revenue could be a little bit different, but that's what's happening with our cash. That's looking at a historical trend. So, we use prior years to kind of gauge what we think we're going to spend each month. And so, that'll give you kind of an estimate, although that doesn't take into consideration any activity that we're doing because of the study session that we had earlier today and things like that. So, if we did nothing based off of what we are projecting right now, that would be a good indication of the expenditures that we plan for the next three months within the general fund.
Thank you, Sarah. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Press Mayor? Okay. I'm sorry.
There's no recommended motion, so you'll...
Yeah, there's no motion.
I don't think there's a motion.
It says possible legal action.
There's just no recommended motion in the packet, so just move to approve the... Yeah, as presented.
I move to approve the...
August financial.
August financial report as given.
I second that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Sarah. We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
We move on then to Item D5, which is a presentation of findings. Salaries exceeding council-approved ranges and positions not approved prior to the 2022 salary study. Interim Manager Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, those present. At the last council meeting, we made a report. The council did approve a list of salary ranges for various positions within the town. We had quite a bit of discussion about what we might do for some of these employees that are in the community that are over the range, over, exceeding the maximum range for some of these positions. Wanted me to look at the League of Arizona Cities and Town salaries, look at these positions. And over the last two weeks, I've been totally immersed in this. And I've got a little presentation that I would like you to look at and review. You know a lot of this, but I think the audience should see a lot of this information that I prepared here. So, real quickly, a little brief history of the Employee Classification Compensation Survey. In October of 2021, the town received a quote from public sector personnel consultants to conduct a classification and compensation study. They proposed to do this for the town at a base cost of $10,000 with add-ons, including $1,500 to look at the position classification review and then to develop job descriptions for each of the positions within the town for a price of $85 for each of those. On October the 11th, the manager here at the time authorized the consultant to proceed with that proposal, suggested that the contract amount not exceed $13,000. The consultant used these comparative cities and towns, Sholo, Taylor, Holbrook, Winslow, Eager, Springerville, St. Johns, as well as Navajo and Apache County. Unfortunately, St. Johns and Apache County did not respond to the consultant survey, so they went to the league survey for those two jurisdictions to try to derive information on what those areas were compensating and how they were classifying their positions. The study was completed, but was never presented to the mayor and town council. Consultant delivered the salary survey of the comparable cities and towns to the town manager. The resulting salary range per position was determined in that survey. And in that survey at the time, in 2022, or maybe late 2022 when it was completed, five employees were below the minimum range, 38 employees were below the mid-range, and one employee was just $39 over the maximum range at that time. The salary ranges per job class were provided to the town manager, and then current salary comparison to the resulting salary range were provided for each employee to the town manager as well. Position titles that have been added since the 2022 salary study include the Public Works Operation Manager, that was not in the prior study, Police Department Receptionist, Building Official/Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer, and Fleet Manager. We did have an equipment and Fleet Mechanic and another Mechanic, but we didn't have a Fleet Manager at the time. In the 22 comp and class study versus the current organization that we see today, in 2022, there were 51 full-time and four part-time employees as part of that salary study, and currently, there are 60 full-time employees and six part-time. Total salary and wages and the benefit cost in '22 excluding overtime was $3,864,519.36. Total salary, wage, and benefit cost in 2025 excluding overtime is $5.9 million, about a 53% increase in that period of time of wages and benefits. I'd like to kind of introduce for your thoughts this evening as we kind of continue with this discussion over the next little while. These are recommended job titles that I think that the council should finally, ultimately, adopt. We've never really had a list of positions within the organization that we should consider for adoption. I mean, I think in the survey in 2022, they had a list of positions, but this simplifies it, a lot of those, and I think it's something we should look at seriously for consideration moving forward. First, in Town Hall, you have the Town Manager. And currently, we have a Finance Director that's currently under contract. Whether that stays under contract moving forward in the future years, you can have that conversation in the future, or whether you want to keep someone in-house. The Finance Director is an essential part of the organization. And so, but right now, it's under contract, and it's a good thing because we are saving by going out to contract for that position. That position used to also have the title of Assistant Town Manager with it. I'm suggesting that we eliminate the Assistant Town Manager title with the Finance Director. Our town is small enough to where we really, I don't really need one, in my opinion. And then as the Town Manager is absent, he can name an acting manager to step in in his or her place. Our accountant is in-house. This accountant wears a lot of hats. In many jurisdictions, we have employees in each of these positions. Our accountant currently handles benefits and HR issues. Oftentimes, that is a separate HR position. We talked about last time, in our smaller towns, we have to wear a lot of hats. And so, it's one way to reduce those costs is to have individuals like our accountant here take on more responsibilities, which she does very well. We have a Community Development Director. We do have a Building Official/Inspector currently. That's not in the current list of positions. I think that's an important position that should be. We have a part-time Code Enforcement Officer that's out there looking at zoning violations and other violations of code. We have an IT Manager, Town Clerk, Deputy Town Clerk, Assistant to the Community Development Director, Community Services Director, Marketing and Communications Director. It's a little change in the name that I'm looking at there. I think currently, it's Tourism and Marketing. We're suggesting that be changed to Marketing and Communications. And then we have a couple of part-time visitor center receptionists. So, in Town Hall, you have nine full-time employees, three part-time, and one contract. In your Public Works Department, you have a Public Works Director that I'm suggesting stay in. That's an important position. We think that the Administrative Assistant should stay there. Secretary, Engineering GIS Technician, Parks... This is where we kind of get into a little simpler organizational structure. You have several divisions in Public Works. You have a Parks Maintenance Crew Supervisor, and you'd have your Parks Maintenance Crew. You have a Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew Supervisor, the Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew. And you can see the number of positions that are recommended for each of these areas. That's pretty much based on what we have now. We have a Facilities Maintenance Crew Supervisor, a Facility Maintenance Crew, Streets Maintenance Crew Supervisor, Street Maintenance Crew. Now, under street maintenance, I think we need to do a little more investigation. Street Maintenance Crew can consist of different positions. For instance, Heavy Equipment Operator, Light Equipment Operator. Those are oftentimes described in other, in the League Salary and Benefit Survey as different positions within, under streets. We might need to separate those out here and give them their own classification and title. It wouldn't add any more employees. It would just define those positions based on their skills and skill sets and certifications, some of those CDL and so forth. The Solid Waste Crew Supervisor and Solid Waste Crew. If you look at the total number there, you've got 23 and a half positions in Public Works. You'll note that I have in this particular area eliminated a Public Works Operations Manager. I believe that the Public Works Director, along with the Administrative Assistant, would be sufficient there to kind of oversee the operations along with these supervisors in each of these respective areas. Again, going on to the Police Department, you've got the Police Chief, Police Commander, Police Sergeant, Police Detective, Police Officer, which includes several of these specialties, including a K-9, which we don't presently have, but are going to go ahead and proceed with obtaining another K-9 for the department. Police Officer Recruit. Generally, that's as needed. If an officer, we have a vacancy, and we want to bring somebody through the academy, that would be that position while they're in the academy. An Executive Secretary, Property and Evidence Technician, an Animal Control Officer, Code Enforcement, that kind of share both of those duties. That position's currently vacant, probably planning on leaving that vacant, given our budget situation for a bit. Records Clerk, and then a Police Department Receptionist, which is also vacant. Was not included in the original list, but probably should be left on the organizational structure, but we'd leave that vacant for a bit. Recommended job titles that we need to adopt. One would be a Library Manager. Right now, we have a Library Director, and I would like to put in Library. The Library Manager is not a Director position. It used to be a Library Manager here. It changed. I'd like to refocus that title as Library Manager. Then we have Library Clerks that fall under the Library Manager. In Library, there are certain functions that each of those clerk have. Circulation Clerk, a Technical Clerk, maybe a Children's Program, Library Clerk, and those are there. So, right now, we have basically two full-time and four part-time in the library. Current position is not on the recommended list of employees. Again, I mentioned the Public Works Operations Manager. A Library Director would then change to Library Manager Reporting, too, what I think should be the Community Services Director. I think I'd like the Community Services Director to be responsible for library, for cemetery, for the liaison to the different partnerships and social service organizations in the community. And what was that? One other?
Recreation.
What's that? Yeah. I'm sorry. I forgot. Recreation, the Parks and Recreation Area. I'd like that to be under Community Services. When I say Parks and Recreation, I'm not talking about maintenance of the parks necessarily, but recreational programs, if we get into leagues that we want to have, the Ramada Reservations, all the recreational things would be under the Community Services Director Oversight. New positions on the recommended list, I think we should add, which is not currently, is the Building Official Inspector, which report to the Community Development Director, a Code Enforcement Officer, part-time, reporting to the Community Development Director, and then the Police Department Receptionist. There's one area that we spoke about at length. We had a few individuals that were significantly over the pay range that the council adopted recently. I'd like to revisit a couple of these positions because as I did further evaluation, we did find that these two positions were significantly under some of the surrounding communities in the area. That's, these two positions involve the Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew Supervisor and the Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew. Basically, the, what's now, in our old study, the Mechanic and Fleet Mechanic. There just wasn't a whole lot of... So, these are the two positions. And what I'm looking at here, what you recently approved was a low for the Supervisor. The low was $39,744. Mid-range was $49,680, and the high range was $59,616. As I've done the evaluation, it looked at comparable cities and towns. These fall below Sholo, but a little bit, and for several of these towns, they don't provide ranges. So, I had to look at some of the other. Payson was one I used, which is a little bigger population. But I'm suggesting a proposed range here with a minimum of $54,954 and a maximum of $75,734. That's in line with what the Arizona League of Cities and Towns have for comparable cities and towns. Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew, recently approved pay range was $36,49. Mid-range, $45,62, and then the upper range, $54,074. And then the proposal would move that up to $46,867,904. What that does, it moves the Fleet Equipment Maintenance Crew member that we have currently in staff within the range, that was approved. And the other position also falls very near the range. I can't remember if it was slightly... Right now, the range for that position is... Let me get back here. Right now, that range goes up to $59,616 on our current salary, as you see. But I think we want to go up to the higher range there. As far as... So, that's a new, that's a new range. I'm sorry. I'm getting myself a little confused. That's a new range, so I would recommend that we adopt those ranges consistent with the League Salary Survey. The other positions that we have in the community, the majority, there are some that still fall outside of the range that was approved by Mayor and Council. I believe there was a total of 10 positions over. Most of these positions are pretty close, but they do still fall over the range. I think my recommendation would still stand is to bring those positions back down to the high point within that range and then have them stay there until such time that the council decides to move forward with a cost-of-living adjustment that would move the range. the range. We had the conversation earlier, and as you heard from our finance officials, we're significantly short of where we need to be in terms of our costs versus revenues. We really need to have a serious conversations about many of these positions and where they fall with some of these ranges. And I'm not ready to preport on that tonight, but I think it's something we need to further consider. But I'd kind of like to have you consider adopting or approving maybe to a separate item later, not tonight necessarily. We'll bring this back. You can share with me your thoughts. I don't want to really have you run into an action tonight, but I would like to have a, get us to a point where we have the adopted ranges with the suggested change tonight on the fleet, and then have you adopt the positions, and then we can talk later further about what we do with individual employees and their ranges, as we have further budget conversations in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Rick. Would it be possible for you to send us those new ranges so that we actually have it?
Yes, I will do that. We'll make sure that gets.
That would be really helpful with all of us to evaluate this.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Rick?
I would love the entire slide presentation emailed to me.
Yeah, the whole.
Not just the ranges, yeah.
I mean, a week was amazing that I could get that kind of done with all the other things in a week.
Yeah.
So we're going to, we'll put it all together, make sure you get a copy of this.
That would be really helpful.
I agree with that. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Rick? I think that was the information we were looking for. You know, we tabled it last time, so we really needed to take action, but clearly, it's not ready.
We still need some more work.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you for all that work. We're going to move on then to item D6, which is a discussion of the selection process for town manager. Stacy has received, I believe she just reported 11 applicants. Those are available for the council to review in the office, per the advice of our attorney, Bill Sims. You know, I think we've kind of all been trying to figure out what kind of process we want to follow here, and I'm just throwing this out there just to start the conversation. I know I visited with vice mayor yesterday, who thinks maybe we need a little outside help on this. I reached out to the mayor of Flagstaff. They're currently searching for a city manager, just to ask her what their process is, just to give us ideas. And like I said, this is a starting point for conversation. They have hired a head hunting firm to help them out, and they're going to go through a number of different committees to winnow out the applicants and present the best three to five, I believe that she said, to the council. But she also gave me the name of somebody who has helped them with other searches, most recently, an HR person. And so she gave me that contact information. I just reached out just to see what's out there and what's available, and I know there's a lot of recruiting companies there. I emailed this gal, and she picked up the phone and called me right back. She sent me a lot of information, but I think we need to evaluate that and maybe look and see what else is out there. She quoted me, she said, most, and I Googled this too, most searches cost you between 25 and 45?
Fifty.
50% of the annual salary of that position. We frankly can't afford that. She charges a flat hourly fee, and she sent me some samples of, like, the metrics she uses, the questions she answered, asks if we want to pursue that or look at other options. You know, I'm very open. Of course, this is a council decision, and this is probably one of the biggest decisions. Aside from these budget things, I think this is the one that with the most long-term impact, hiring the right person to lead our town forward. So at this point, I am opening this up for comments.
I like an idea of getting an outside party, so, I mean, some people have lived in town forever, and I think to get some outside help, to pick a person, to, not predict the person, but pick applicants, and then those, like you said, if it's narrowed down to five or six or whatever, then those applicants, all those applicants, we should, as a council, I believe, be able to see who applied. I don't really like the idea of getting screened out before we ever even see who they are.
Well, you heard me say the applications are available for review. So I think that's a good point. Other questions, comments? I mean, I would like council thoughts on where we proceed. Go ahead, Council Heisler.
I too reached out. I reached out to a company called Human Resource Strategies, and they would very similarly work through a process, be there to see that everything is fair and equitable as the process happens. I believe the price that she quoted was a ballpark from 10,000 to 15,000. To manage that process, design the process, presentations, community groups, all the same, same kind of stuff. So I think it'd be great to get somebody outside to do the process.
I think we've already advertised, we've started that. We don't know if we even have anybody that meets our qualifications. I haven't looked at the applications yet, so, and I don't know that anybody on the council has. We just need to make sure we do this right. So, any other?
Are we going to then form a community committee to screen the applicants for us? Get some outside expertise from the community?
Well, I think that needs to be part of the process, in my opinion, is having.
I, that's what I, agree with that, too.
Yeah.
That we should do that.
And then maybe even some of our staff, you know, have a number of different committees, which is what Flagstaff is doing, because they want to have a community group, and she's suggested, you know, in Flagstaff, they have a different demographics. I mean, they've got NAU there, they've got some big companies. But then also, an employee group, because we need to make sure that our employees, our directors, or their representatives have buy-in on this person, and see how that works. I think it's important. And then, so, I would like to see, go ahead, Council Turner.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
I got a, one of my customers sent me an email about the Duffy Group, and I mentioned it to a few people in the room here. I guess they just presented 168 candidates to the city of Cottonwood, and they have a lot of expertise. They're out of Phoenix. They are currently working with Flagstaff, Wickenburg, Page, Sedona, and a town I can't pronounce, Tucson, Arizona. A town of 590 people. So they work with larger towns, they work with smaller towns, and so the things that your contact and Flagstaff told you about is pretty much what I was told when I made a phone call to this group. Their process takes about 10, 12 weeks. It's very inclusive with the mayor, the council, and our customers who vote for us. Very interactive. They have an hourly rate. I said, "How much would this cost?" "30 grand." And after the meeting we had this afternoon, I hesitated to even bring this up right now, but I think it supports getting someone to help us outside, whoever we decide upon, gives this process, this selection, a lot of legitimacy. You know, instead of a handful of us and a handful of citizens, our customers work in this process. So I'm not going to fall down on my sword to say this is the right group, but I like the idea of someone outside open with this process.
So we now have three. The, when I spoke with in Phoenix, Tabor's got a contact, and, I'm sorry, Council Heisler has a contact, as well as Council Turner. Maybe we send out a solicitation to them and say, "What would you recommend for us? What would the potential cost be?" And maybe we could ask Stacy to do that as our HR person.
I would be happy to help Stacy with that, too, making the contact and making sure you have the right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I might just add, I mean, kind of let them know where we are in the process. They don't need to start from scratch.
Right.
Pick it up. And let me just say, I have, I've had discussions with others on this, and I first thought, there's no way we should be spending money on this, not in the situation we are now. But, and I said, we have the talent in our local staff to do that. So then I talked to some of the staff, and after talking with them, I think the best thing is to get somebody from outside to do some of the process. I do think we need a citizens group, as well as an employees group also, a committee in both of those cases, to evaluate and actually score how they give them some ranking. And then this individual would look at that and then bring that back to us as a council to move forward. But I, like I said, I've changed my outlook after discussions with staff and others, and I think this is a big step for us, an important step for us moving forward, and we need to do it right. So I would support that, too.
So consensus, we can get contact information to Stacy tomorrow and Rick?
Yes.
And ask for information from all three of these entities, and we can consider it at our next council meeting? Yes. Council Heisler, yes?
The only, the only thing I would add is I would like to include a group of civic leaders, peers, that are, you know, work with those folks every day, know what it takes to do the job, and can help us evaluate those positions, and a group of business owners as well, since economic development is one of the highlights in that particular job description. It would be, I think, good to have a group of business owners that could also vet the candidate.
Well, maybe that can be part of our request to these folks, say that these are the thoughts we have, and maybe they could present kind of a plan?
Yeah.
Does that sound fair? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
If I could add to that, when we present it to them, I mean, I don't see any point in them, oh, pulling the city manager from Phoenix or Tucson or Oro Valley. But again, like communities, and I'm not necessarily saying that they have to be here from the White Mountains. I'm thinking more like, it could even be a Sedona. I mean, they're tourists based on everything that they do. I mean, look at different communities that have the same, that are looking at the same things we are. And I think I would suggest to them, you know, when they're looking at that, I agree with, we need to do that and involve them, but get those of like interests, I mean, of what we're looking at and facing here in Pinetop, not necessarily those that don't have anything in common with us, so to speak.
Yeah. Well, I kind of agree there. I think we need to make sure they know what the salary range is, because, you know, I've talked to one other town manager and inquired his availability or if he'd be interested in the job. And we talked about salary, and we were like half of what his current salary is. We just don't want to try to get somebody interested and all of a sudden say, "Wait a minute, you're only paying that much?" You know?
Well, I think it's in the advertising.
Yeah, it's got a, yeah, that's all I'm saying, is, yeah, we want to let them, we want to pick people who like that salary range.
I think it's also a lifestyle we have to sell to them.
Well, we've got a lot of things to sell besides salary. That's right.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. So if we can make that happen, I'll send you, Councilors Turner and Heisler will send you their contacts as well, and we'll.
Yes, one point, just for clarification, make sure I understood correctly. I heard Tabor, Councilman Heisler, say that you want to include civic leaders and business owners. You're talking about within the area, the community. Then I heard something about picking people maybe from some of the like communities, maybe that can come in and help. So you want both of those as well? Is that what you were getting at, Councilman Vice Mayor?
Yes, either both or if they can be on the same committee, I don't know, that's fine, too. But I think getting some input from both of those groups would be important.
Okay.
Yeah, my suggestion wasn't necessarily local civic leaders, but like-minded individuals. I think there are some civic leaders here locally that could be involved. I think that I've seen over the, over time, I've seen police chiefs that have town managers sitting on there. I've seen fire chiefs with, you know, city employees on their selection group, county managers, just, and they don't necessarily, to Sterling's point, I don't necessarily think they have to be from here.
Okay.
But somebody that is familiar with that job, familiar with what it takes to do that job, and can vet those candidates out.
That's it. Thank you.
I think you want to have as broad a search as possible, but we need to discuss logistics. I think whoever is selected to be the new town manager should live here, too.
Well, yeah. Okay.
So we could search the whole country, but they have to live here.
Absolutely. I think it says that in our employee manual, they have to live within 15 minutes. So, okay. All right. Thank you guys for your input. I think that that's a good process, and we'll get moving on that moving forward. Okay. Last item on the agenda is item D7, town council committee liaison and town manager monthly reports. Council Ferno?
Reporting for tracks. I talked with Steve Dobbs today, actually, and just talked about a couple of the challenges they're facing, just with our town's budget, and as it relates to maps, he's kind of asking for some help there. But then largely, we spoke about all the work that they're doing on the trails, and I've personally seen it. The trail's kind of on our end of town, Los Burrows, Blue Ridge, Country Club Trail. They've all been improved drastically in the last 30 days. I don't know how they've done it all, but just some incredibly deterring rock sections that didn't make any sense are just gone, and it just speaks to the amount of labor that they've put into those trails.
Thank you, Council Ferno. Council Smith?
Yeah, the transit advisory council will be meeting next month, or next couple of months before we have another meeting, so I don't have anything to report on that. Arizona Alpine Trail, we are continuing our master plan. That's our 700-mile OHV trail. We expect that to be completed in the first quarter, probably by February, which will make the Forest Service very happy. They want to see everything in writing as far as what they've already agreed to, and that's what we'll send them, is a master plan that includes that. But it includes also how we're going to improve the trail as time goes on. So it's a big endeavor, and it's coming along very nicely. Just on a little side note, I will tell you that one of the problems we've faced in creating this trail is finding fuel for people that are 80 miles to get to someplace and 80 miles back, and you can't make it. One of those places was Hannigan Meadow, and luckily, the owner of Hannigan Meadow has a tank, but no pumps to pump the fuel. And I found two almost brand-new gas pumps, including one that has diesel and one that has regular fuel, and bought those, took them up to the, to Hannigan Meadow last Saturday, and they're just delighted, and so is Greenleaf County. They're really happy that they'll now have tax revenue coming in from Hannigan Meadow with the new gas pumps, and that was a kind of a fun, a fun thing to do, except people kept asking me, "How come you have gas pumps in your backyard?" Well, I did for a week, but that was about it. Okay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just real quick, we appreciate, Blue Ridge's Harmony Choir performed the National Anthem at the flag ceremony on September 11th, and then Explore Arizona, which is a private school, also performed a song they had written in honor of our first responders. And Explore Arizona then went over to our museum in Lakeside and did cleanup around there, which is much appreciated by the museum. And the museum will be having a board meeting on Monday, actually, here in this facility. So that's all I have.
The only thing I would like to say is thank you. The only thing I would like to say is thank you to our Public Works and Parks crews for helping the Fishers of Men last week put the flags up. I went out there, and they were all there. If it weren't for them, it would have been a long morning. So, I appreciate all of those individuals who showed up. I know they took them down yesterday. I wasn't able to make it, so I hope that they had enough support for that one. So, thank you guys. And Council Heisler?
I'm going to ask for forgiveness. This is not a committee report, but I wanted to take a minute and thank the council and thank staff here at the town and this community in supporting the Timber Mesa family in the tragic loss of two of our members, Damon and Brenna. It's been a very tough time for us, but the support of this community and the support of the town has made it just a little bit, a little bit easier. So, I wanted to just say thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. We're all there with you, Tabor. Council Phillips?
Went to the Humane Society meeting yesterday. They got their totals back from Happy Tales, and they did, after all their expenses and everything, they made about $140,000. So, it was a really good, good year for them. And if anyone needs a dog or a cat, they're full. So, they got plenty to adopt out. So, go visit, take a tour. You'll fall in love with a pet.
Thank you. Councilor Turner?
Thank you all for proving me wrong. You stayed for the whole meeting. I appreciate your attendance and your patience with us. Talked a little bit about the Nature Center SOP part of it specifically. But the Community Center, formerly the Senior Center, is going through some turnover right now. The director has resigned. I think she's got about a month left before she leaves. They're actively interviewing replacements for her. I don't know how that's going to work out. She was a real find. She writes a lot of grants. She runs that place. And that's going to be a big loss if we can't talk her out of that. Community Center is also looking for board of director members. If someone's got a little bit of time, doesn't seem like there are very many people that want to spend time over there. And they feed a lot of people, and they have a lot of projects for seniors. And if we can find a few hours a month to help them out, they would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Turner.
I have a question. When is her last day? When did she?
I think it's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks.
Cormick, do you?
It's like, I told them 24th or, I don't remember the exact date.
So, third week of October, sounds like?
Yes. She resigned once before and then came back. I almost had her talked out of it a week ago, but...
Thank you for that. Rick, do you have anything?
Just a couple of items. I think at the next council meeting, we're going to be asked to have a presentation by Public Works. I'm sure that'll be Melena, probably, I think. I'll get with her, but about the status of projects that are being undertaken by Public Works, including the police department, where we're kind of wrapping up there, Mountain Meadows Park improvements, including the water tank, you know, the top of the woods, road construction projects. We'll get a report from Public Works on those projects and how they're coming along, and timing and completion and that kind of things. The, we are, as I mentioned earlier, looking at a K-9 for the police department. I think that's going to be a great addition. We had one before. We need to get one back. There was a donation given to the community to purchase the dog. We have an officer that's going to take that responsibility on. We have a vehicle that's equipped for the K-9. So, I think it'll be a good addition to our law enforcement team. The other, I just might mention that we did today put a statement out on the talk of the town related to the budget conversations we've been having. For anyone interested in looking at that statement, I think my name is on there if anybody wishes to call me and have further conversations about what we're doing to move forward and improving the financial conditions of the community. We want to be very transparent. We're not very transparent through this process. And I appreciate the council's transparency in wanting to do that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned, then. Good night.